Okay, here we go. Call this meeting to order. Welcome everyone to a special meeting of the North Shore School Board where we are going to discuss the community survey as well as the board survey regarding potential characteristics of our interim superintendent that we are searching for. And we welcome Jim Hager and Rob McGregor.
McGregor.
Thank you, from GR Recruiting who are going to present to us summary and report of the community survey from K-12. Just to go around, present are Jim Hager, Rob McKinnon, McGregor? I keep doing that wrong. Dr. Michelle Reed, our superintendent, board members, directors Hayes, Cogan, Cast, and Swain, Jackie McGordy, the president, and let's go to it. Shall we?
Yeah, thanks President McGordy. It is our pleasure to have Jim here. Jim Hager and Issac and Stewart is going to advance slides at your request.
Okay.
We're ready.
We're ready. Okay, all right, good. And first off, thank you very much for this opportunity. We've been working diligently and as you know, we've really been working on a tight, tight timeframe as per your needs. Before I get started, I want to compliment the staff. They've done just yeoman work with us Saturdays, Sundays. We've been working basically around the clock with the information, trying to get it to you so you can make a good decision. So I would be remiss if we didn't say that the communications individuals, the superintendent's office, all the people that I've had connections and Rob has had connections and Carla who is not here with us today. But I want to say thank you publicly that the work has really helped us expedite some of the things that we have on here. Today's meeting is really very specific in its purpose and that purpose is for you as a board to hear what you talked about as profile interest you want to see in a superintendent as well as the community input that we had. As a reflection, as you know, as we did this profile, it was not as thorough or expanded as it is if it's a full superintendent search. So we're really looking at these profile factors more than anything else as we go through. I'll highlight those as we go through. The other thing that we're talking about here is that these profiles, when you agree on them, this will give us the opportunity as we look at the candidates, and we're getting some really good candidates, I want you to know, I'm really pleased. We're going to make your job difficult. I just really enjoy that when we do make it difficult for you as we go through. And that will be coming in about a week now that we will put all of this information. You will be getting some information from me in particular about the candidates and a video that we do. Some of you are aware of that video process that we go through. Given those remarks, the survey itself is done by our partner, K-12 Insight. And so they do all other kinds of things, but this is specific to what we do for searches. We had the search open from May 5th through May 13th. So we had a good time. Their statistics show that's the best amount of time. Sometimes if it drags on too long, you start getting different kinds of comments than you did when it was compacted into the timeframe. If it's too short. So this particular timeframe, we were able to put that together in, really I think in good fashion and lots, as you'll see here in just a minute. Again, I have to compliment the communications group. Man, they put lots of good information out and as a result of that, we had 4,162 participants on the survey. That's exceptional, you know? And I'm going to have to use some probably new phrases with you or show you that you're really, this is outstanding when you start looking, saying, "Well, that's outstanding" when you look at that. We've done much larger districts and very seldom have we exceeded this number of participants. So there's a lot of high interest in your community as you look through that. And if you go to the next slide for me, please. When you look at that 4,162, you can see the breakdown of, we had people that classified themselves as parents of current staff, which was 63% of the respondents. Parents of future students, 5%. Staff members, not including classified professional, everyone within the district. And that was also a very good turnout from staff with all the things that are going on in everybody's lives these days. And so that was a really good time. What I'm really pleased with is we had almost 700 kids participate. And we really push that when we do the long-term searches, but I just think that's real, that gives you, that students are involved with their schools, within their community, and that's, of any figure that's up there, I really like that one as you look at. We had 304 community members also. And then we had 56 others. And I don't know about you, when you do your budgeting, sometimes it's the miscellaneous expenses. You wonder, where did that money go? I did a background on these 56. And most of these are people, they are either a parent, they're a student, staff member, but they put a specificity behind that characteristics. And so when you do that, about, of that 56, 11 of those were teachers that had participated. And these were people that gave their specific name rather than, just check the mark, they said teacher and gave their name. There were five retired teachers that said teacher, retired. There were three substitute teachers that said teacher, substitute. And there was one student teacher that you have someplace in the district that he or she participated in. So there were approximately 11 teachers out of that 56 there. There were 10 graduate or former students. And they didn't just say student, they just said, "I'm a graduate." And there are a few that said, "We were a dropout," but they participated in the study. So there's 10 individuals there. There were 14 parents that signed on as parents, but they put a designation on it, like former students, my kids dropped out of school, I moved them into private schools. And so those, there's approximately 14 of that 56, but they're all recorded. I don't want to make any mistake. They're recorded in the data, but just to know who those are. The one that kind of surprised me, and as we refine this process in other searches, I think we'll add this, you had a significant number of grandparents that put in, grandparents, kids living with us, grandparents graduated from here, so on. So there's about eight out of that group of 4,000, which is basically a small number, but it's a little larger than some of the other kind of groups. There were, we couldn't quite figure it out, it kept saying you had 12 board members participated in the survey, and I said, "But there's only five." I was like, "Wow, they can't do it twice." But what happened, as we went down to analyze that, there were two people that were on PTSA board, two people on foundation board. There were two people that gave labor and union as their designation. And then there were five individuals that just said, "I'm Steve, I'm Jim," so we don't know what that designation is. But that accounts for that 56 miscellaneous, but they are all included in the 426, okay?
Interesting.
So the next question that was brought up, you want to go to the next slide, please?
Issac.
Thanks. There you go. One of the next ones is, one of the things we do in these, timing was a little different on this survey. We were going out recruiting before we had a lot of this information. One of the questions we ask is, tell us something, what's one word that comes up about your school district? And so when we talk to candidates, we can say, "This is what people are saying about that." And this word wall gives you, those are the 10 words that came out. You see 3,583 people participated in this question, and these were the words. If you're not familiar with the word wall, the bigger the word, the more often it was addressed, and so you'll see that. So when you see some other things that are in there that are a little smaller, but these were the 10 words, and those are the ones that when we talk to the candidates, we look at those as we go along. We also asked the next question. This is the Chamber of Commerce, you had this in your interview question, if you recall, with us. But what are the selling points of your school district community that you'd like to be attracted in? These were the primary ones that came up through the surveys. The number one selling point is, it's an amazing, caring, dedicated staff, teachers, students, and parents. That was the number one phraseology that we were able to glean from this. Second one was, it's a supportive, engaged, involved, and diverse community. Participants also said the community is progressive and has a real growth mindset. And so those were the positive statements. The less often said, but it was a third selling point, was the selling point, the district's nimbleness. Now, that word nimble is mine, okay? But it was, the response was how they responded so well with the example given of COVID. But they also talked about other issues, that there was always a responsiveness that was timely. And so I used the word nimbleness to change in dynamics such as COVID, also potential for growth and success of the district. So those were kind of the three main categories that we saw on this survey. You in your individual surveys gave us additional comments about that, but this is what we're using as we go forward. This next question is just some data that we think is important for the candidate to know and good for the board to know, I think as well, but says, "Rate the quality of the following aspects of the district and its relationship to the community." And there were 4,000 plus that responded to this. And again, those are really good numbers. 74% of the people in this survey said you are excellent to good in the relationship. There's 20% that just said, "Nah," you know, it's kind of the passive, "It's not good, it's not bad," just, "Oh, I never thought about it that way." And then there's about 6% that have had some, they don't, they think it's poor, okay? Again, when you look, for those of you that are in the data analysis, that's what the numbers we're showing you, those are really good. And I would say, given the conditions we've been living in, in the last two years, that you will see maybe a little more intensity than maybe you would see elsewhere. But from our point and our experience, that's a really good. Relationship with local organizations as well. You can see a tremendous, really, really good, 95%, if you will, that are looking and saying the relationships are good. Communication you can see is really good. There's just a few on the negative side of that. The one that kind of surprised me because you put so much emphasis on transparency, if there were, I won't call it a weak spot, I'll tell you, but a difference in the norm of what you're seeing on this particular one. At 4,068, you can see most of, the majority of the people believe very strongly in the transparency that you exhibit. There were about 14% that were saying, "Yeah, they could do better on that one." And then your fiscal management, again, very, very good comments on all the way through. So if you were to look at this in general, we think, when we talk to the candidates, we say, "There's a good to excellent on these particular characteristics with the caveat, given the conditions, but these would be good in really good times anyway." So I'm really pleased with that.
Yeah. Jim, if you go back to that slide just for a minute. So one of the ways I like to look at data like these is to use those two ratings to the far left, excellent and good, and lump those together and call that the combined positive. If you look at it from that frame, that's extremely good.
Yeah, yeah, good, yeah, really good.
Thanks.
Thank you. So this was a question that we worked, actually worked with your team in wording this question. We didn't have it quite this way in the original, and they asked if they could make some changes and so on. So this is a question with collaboration with your team, what that we put. And we said, "What do you think are the three critical issues below that the interim superintendent needs to focus on immediately?" And these, you see the top three, student support services, teacher quality, social emotional learning is the three characteristics they felt the new superintendent needed to deal. There's additionals, we took it down to that 7% level. Anything below 7% was thrown in the box on the right. You see the other things that were talked about was special ed delivery, lots of removing politics from education. We got that in a series, not just this particular case, but there were people that were just tired of some of the, not saying you were doing it, but just politics in general, you know, not just, but this gives them an opportunity to say something, and so they were saying something. And then a teacher support and key benefits. Once again, why do we do this particular slide? This is what we talked to the candidates about, this is what they're looking for, this is, because that's what candidates will ask us, you know? So what's a board looking for? Well, the board's looking from, given the input and their own input, these are the kinds of things that they're looking for.
Might I ask Jim, so can you go back a second real quick? So student support services, was that the phrase used on the survey? Because that could mean different things to different people.
It was just that way.
Okay, all right.
And it's an overarching kind of, yeah, all of these are just exactly the way they were cited.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. This is an interesting one. This is probably the most misinterpreted of anything. Rob gave you a good example of how you combine things to see what the good is, but every one of us in this room, my guess is, that if you've been to a doctor's office recently, a dentist's office, had your car worked on, bought something, you get a survey 24 hours later that asks you a bunch of questions. And then the last question is, "Would you recommend us to anybody?" Okay? You're going to say you're going to ask no, or maybe. Well, that's all this is, okay? So given the stream of questions we ask, we asked the question, "How likely are you to recommend the district to a friend or a colleague?" And yet we had 4,018 people respond to this. 27% of the people that responded, we declared them to be distractors, and they gave a score of zero to six, okay? So that's what we call, and in political circles, that would be your opposition in a sense. When you look at the passives, it's in a seven to eight range, and in your case, it was about 33% were in that. And then you had the nine to 10, the top promoters, 40%. And then what they do is develop what they call a net promoter score, which is what you see over here, and your score is a 13. Now, let me be really clear with you. The range is a minus 100 to a plus 100. That's the range of these scores. Anything, statistically, anything above zero is positive. And this score of 13 is one of the highest we have ever had, okay? Very high. I've only had one other school district that's had a higher score than this, and that score happened to be a 24. And I thought, you know, one of my first times going through that, "No, that's not very good." It is, it's an excellent score. So you have a very positive net promoter people recommending, and the anecdotal work also that we've been doing says that. People are very proud of your district, the participation, I think is very proud. So that's a really good score. Naturally, what you want to do, you want to make sure you keep the promoters and you want to work with the passive groups to meet, and do whatever work you need to do with any of the detractors that are, but it's more of a working piece of looking at it. Take that 13 is, if I were to put a grade with that, I'd put it at an A+ if I had to. We'll go through the grading mechanisms as we.
So it's a different scale than we're used to.
Yeah.
I'm questioning the scale.
Another analogy is the mean is 100. Think of it as IQ. 113, I'll take it.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Again, it's just an informative piece for you. All right. We also asked questions of the interaction, which I, once again, using Rob's comment, if you put the two greens together, this is outstanding. And so it's asking, "Have you ever spoken to the superintendent or staff member or school staff member? How did you find that?" And you can see in this case, the numbers are in the 3,000 plus, almost 4,000 if you round them up. But you can see, you easily found out who to contact. You had 85% of the people said, "Yeah, we know how to do that." Were you able to make contact with the right? And there you're getting a 91% of the people that responded. Now naturally, you've got to be concerned about those that are on the other end. The 12, 8, 13, 5, 12, and 20 of these, those are the passive people. They're the ones, "Ah, it was okay, wasn't that one good." So your negatives were so small on this, they don't even show up on the graph very much. So if you look at it from that perspective, they are very good. So on the first one, and I did the calculation just to give you the specifics, on that first one, you easily found out who to contact, there's 3% that were negative, okay? That was, out of that told 3% of the individuals. The second one, it was a 2% on the strongly disagree. You received timely responses. You can, again, you can see putting the numbers together very strong, only 6% were, fall into that negative category. The person you spoke to with courtesy, you can see, again, you can read those for yourselves. But again, all of these were very, very good, I believe, with maybe the only one that was, the lowest one was the last one. Did you receive all the information you needed? And probably, most people never get all the information. If they're like me, you want to keep, you want more, you want more, you want more. But we found that that was very good is when we start talking about communication, because one of the things we're using with the candidates is that communication is very important. It's very strong in the school district, and we have the evidence to show them that. So as he or she is kind of putting their things together for you to look at, I'm sure they'll be addressing some of these as well. This is a little bit of a continuation of what we've already seen with that net promoter score. But what type of impact in your past do you feel the district has done? 4,000, very positive, positive impacts. Again, you've got, you've got over 65% of the people saying, "This is really, I've had very positive impact." 21% know, the 11 negative, and a 4% very negative. Knowing you and knowing Dr. Reed and the work she does, you want to make those smaller, and I understand that. But from a large-scale survey like this, these are really good numbers that you should feel very, very good about. Out of the series, this is the key piece that we were driving to as we set the stages for this. And these are, again, the units that we gave. You recall, I, in interviews with Carla, worked with me on these interviews. We asked each of you, you'd gotten these in advance, you looked at them, you identified your eight, and we recorded those. And that's what you have on that worksheet that you have in front of you, showing you of where you stood in relationship to some of the others. So when you start to look at these, again, we had 4,125 people respond to these profile indicators, and you can see that 57% of the people that responded said, "We believe it's important that the new interim superintendent is an effective communicator, creating strong school and community relations." 57% equals out to about 2,362 of the 4,000. Naturally, it's over half of that, and you can do the mathematics very quickly yourselves, I'm sure. So that was the second one. And you can see on the worksheet where you're, where that particular category fell for you. And again, this isn't trying to debate between what your indicators were and what the community. But you see, this is what the community is looking at. Can you live with those, or are there some areas that are missing? Because it's your responsibility as a board, and I don't need to tell you this, but I will, it's your fiduciary responsibility to select the person to be the new lead in an interim position. So this is all data for you to use to make your decision in a timely and well mannered. So the second one, 48% of those respondings, they were looking, they thought the new interim should be accountable and responsible for her or his actions. 44% wanted a trusted leader who values ethics and integrity by practicing moral authority. 41% on the transparency piece. 40% leads by example through honest practices. And when you get down to 40%, we're now at about 1,648 respondents on this particular area, so going from the 2,000 plus that we had at the top. So when you get down, and then 39% provide sustained systemic and evidence-based interventions to obtain equitable access to learning for all students. 39% of the respondents said that's an important factor they'd like to see in the new superintendent. Then you have a tie. And if you look at the numbers on the worksheet that I give you, that tie is the result of a rounding up and a rounding down. And that's how it came, even though the numbers are a little bit, one's a little higher than the other, when you round them up and round them down, that's, you've got a tie within that category. So you have empowers others by promoting team strengths and students-first approach, makes strategic high-quality decisions with big lenses while managing district resources. That's the tie. Builds strong diverse teams and promotes teamwork. And when you get to that 34, you're looking at 1,390 respondents. So that's about 1,000 less than the number one category, just as you're looking at the scheme of things. And then manages complex circumstances through problem-solving and decision-making. And just, that's at a 33% and felt, if you look at these, this is kind of the top eight to 10 that, and you see where you fell in relationship to those. Some of yours are very much at the top level, you've got agreements, if you want to look at it from that point. Go ahead to the next slide. I'm not going to read these all off it to show them, and then if you have a question, you can look at them. But these are the other remaining lower respondents as you look at those. I don't know, there may be some that surprised you a little bit, and when we get into the conversation of this in a minute, we can look at that. You want to go to the next slide then. And then the last piece, this is, works through the last percentages that might be there. And again, if you look at the relationship to you as board members, you might see some of the differentials on some of these. I'm looking at the one maintains a vision focused on the future. I know there's a little difference on what the community has said on that one and what some of you were saying about it. That's some of the dynamics of different positions that each of you are in. Let me stop for just a minute and see if there's any questions on that piece, on any of this. We'll come back and talk about it in just a few minutes, but go to the, you want to go to the next slide. This is the one that you all had fun with this one. This is a scale from a collaborative leader to an authoritative leader. And actually, if you look at where the community input fell, between three and four, that's where you all fell, basically, too. You didn't want to give me a whole number, you wanted to give me a 4.235. You wanted to break it down in some fashion. But you can see that there's that area. Yes, you want, we want to be a collaborative leader, but when a hard decision needs to be made, they want somebody that has the stamina to make those hard and stand by them. And I think that's why you're seeing maybe a little leaning toward collaborative, but also the differences between the other scales, I think it becomes really critical. Okay? Next slide, please. Oh, there it is. This is, thank you. This we found to be a really interesting one with all of the groups or school districts we've been working, because we know all the things that everybody's doing with social media and a variety. 97% said they get their information through email. And phone calls, 9%, that one surprised me a little bit, but probably, if they're like me, I don't answer my phone unless I know who the call's from. But text messaging was 26, website 34, but all the others. All the others, I thought were interesting, district app, Facebook, Twitter, robocall, Instagram. Those are all very small. And I know a lot of districts are doing those social, and I'm not saying take away. But you can see if what you need is in that email approach and working from there. Is there any number up there that surprises you?
The text message, actually. That one surprises me.
Yeah. But I don't know about you and Rob, you might want to say, I find myself, I used to do email all the time. And then people, I wouldn't, they weren't responding like I wanted them to. So I went to text message, and people seem to text, respond to a text message more quickly than they do an email.
It's helpful to know, actually, that people are receptive to it.
For now. It's also important to note that the item says to receive information.
Yeah, that's right, that's a good point.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, I actually thought that was lower than what I was expecting.
Oh, really?
Well, I'm thinking like snow days, or reminder of Wednesday early release. You could have a lot more snow days.
This is the, this is the end of the presentation. Let's go, if you wouldn't mind going back to the one that starts with the profile of descriptors. It should be about eleven, slide eleven.
Ten.
There you go, yeah. This now is your time. If there's questions you would like to ask for further clarity, or the hope is that we can get affirmation from you today that says, "These are the eight or the ten, we can live with these." Because if you do that today, we will be putting these out to our primary applicants that have completed their applications. We'll get this out to them today, so they, as they prepare their materials. And others that we're also recruiting and doing, would do that. So it's really important that you can come to that conclusion today. We're not hung up, we gave you kind of a direction of eight, but if you want to, if you want to add to ten. No. What we will debate with you, Amy, is we will debate if you want to combine some of these together. When you start combining it, you lose the ability to make the distinction of candidates. Because it's like when somebody gives you a yes or no question, and, well, is it a yes or a no? Based on, it's a double compounding that just doesn't work. So, Dr. Reed, I can turn this over to you, or if you would like me to expedite it. But I'll turn it to you.
Yeah, we have an opportunity to have this dialogue. And it just, let's use our little name tags as we will. I'll just take notes, but I think it's a conversation really, if you want to center on eight, they do need to be, I believe, the same eight. So, that's a ground rule. But what are your thoughts, sort of starting off?
Well, maybe can we take just a quick minute to go through them, and, you know, look at the results? And then maybe discuss them.
We're actually really comfortable with silence. Not every group is, but I think that this...
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just would appreciate that, and then maybe we can chat.
As long as Director Hayes passes the cookies. That can be amenable to. Thank you, I didn't have one the first time around, so I'll clarify. David? Thanks. No, if you could call them, that would be, or form.
We need a lot of these these weeks.
Yes, well, we could pass the cookies back. So, thoughts? You've had a chance to kind of take a look, see. David, I noticed you were taking copious notes. Want to start us off?
Yeah, I'd love to start off. So I appreciate the forced exercise of having to pick eight from a list of really good, important values in a superintendent and a leader for a school district and a community. So I like that idea. The thought that I had in looking at this was, if we take the top eight that came in from the community, those are great characteristics that scored well on the board votes as well. So I think there was a lot of good alignment there. And so what I did was, just kind of took a look at where maybe the school board had high level of votes for things that the community didn't rate in the top eight, and see what those things were. And interestingly, it looks like with just a couple of themes, we could maybe expand number one and two of the community's top two lists, add a word or two, and maybe broaden them slightly to incorporate some of the things that the board also felt were strong characteristics. Yet there are no real problems with kind of expanding, you know, this statement to include another word or two.
So if I might ask, are you thinking, I'm looking at one in particular, trying to follow what you were saying. If you look at the first one that the board, or that the community says is their priority, is effective communicator, creating strong, so on. And if you go to the one that says, "Ask great questions and think, act strategically," that was a high priority by many of you on the board. We could easily incorporate that stem into the first one and not lose the nature of the first question, if that makes sense and of value.
Same theme.
And then I'm going to add a wrinkle, because I was pairing the first one with the number thirteen, knowing stakeholder interest through listening and learning. So then it becomes, yes, a bit of a hodgepodge, I guess, to add three. But I felt, I felt like that it's not just communicating out, but taking the input back in.
You know, I kind of did a similar thing. When I really looked at twenty-two, asking great questions, and thirteen, listening and learning, I felt that if you're listening and learning, maybe that kind of implies that by learning, you're asking good questions. So I kind of felt like that could blend in as well in number one, both of those, frankly.
Right. Jackie?
I was actually thinking along similar lines for multiple ones, but I was just looking at it. Perhaps twenty-two can go with, it's labeled number nine on here, but it's the eighth in the list of priorities. Strategic, high-quality decisions, ask great questions, and act strategically. Those two could, I think, be easily combined, or they're very similar states, so the same thing, I think. And then we'd have thirteen with number one, if that makes sense.
So thirteen goes with line two, item one, and twenty-two would go in line nine, item eight.
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Director Swain?
Those are similar thoughts, just, yeah, looking at where the board came in and the community did. I mean, you can tell, just from, I mean, from my own perspective when I filled this out, was that you could tell the, some of the board majority votes were focused on the interim of holding the course, right? Because everything on this list is what we want in a candidate. There's no negatives in here, right? There's no, but I kind of, when I filled it out, it was more focused on the interim candidate, that we want to not rock the boat, to keep the strategic goals and the plan, our programs going forward, not making sudden moves, like we talked about, and leave that for the permanent candidate. So you can see that difference. But I like the idea of, you know, I made a list of six that were the top board ones, which we've kind of already implied. I mean, the other one was, there were three or five of us that was number nineteen, which was maintain a vision focused on the future. I think that just kind of sums up the, the focus to remain, maybe, more so than anything else. And I don't know if that slides up somewhere else. But it is kind of a general statement with that not a lot of specificity. So I would be fine kind of dropping that for, you know, for purposes of the interim interviews, but still very important, you know, long-term strategic characteristic, right? So, but I'm in favor of these combinations that you've both thrown out, for sure.
Director Hayes?
Yeah. So echoing what has been said, I thought, right, and it's number two and three up there, number three and four here, that they, if we needed to create space, that those could be combined, that they felt like they were getting at that same ethical, accountable goal, as does six. And to follow up on what Director Swain was saying around that, that we don't want major change, but I think that, and given the percentages of what we, the board and community, there's still a desire for creativity and innovation and forward-thinking work. And I think we would, just for a year, we'd hope that with a superintendent, that if someone wanted to start a, I don't know, some...
Something we didn't think of, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Some club or class or program, that there would be capacity to say, you know, yes, that's... That's something that, yeah, people were thinking that way.
I like the idea of having the word "future thinking" in here for the simple fact that, you know, we talk a lot about how the school isn't working for all of our students. And so if people aren't looking towards what needs to be done differently, it just is missed opportunity. So I like the idea of a candidate being attracted to this position because they have a vision to do things better or differently than what has been done. So I would hate for somebody to come in and feel like there's, you know, they don't want to do, they don't want to think about the future of things, they just want to...
So, you know, what I did, very similarly to everyone else, I was making categories, right? And trying to see which ones are shades of gray of communications and accountability of ethics, right? And so just to make sure, if, you know, with some wordsmithing, which we love to do, if we, you know, took the top ones, if we can make sure we covered all those categories. And I think it's a pretty representative, you know, I, one of my categories, I named big picture, literally out of, what's listed here is number nine, right? That strategic, big-picture lens. And there's several of them about, you know, focusing on growth, and number twelve seems big picture to me. You know, resiliency in the face of challenges, fourteen, you know. So I think with our little wordsmithing and sticking with the top from the survey, I think we do cover those categories pretty well.
I agree. But one of the, one of the problems with having so many to choose from, there are actually a lot of similarities between some of them. And as Director Cass indicated, there's a similar focus to multiples of those. So, you know, I like the idea of combining some, like we've discussed. We could combine some more if we want to pull something up from the lower scores, if you will. But the other thing, as Director Swain indicated, I keep coming back to, which are the more important for the interim, which is what we're focused on now, versus, you know, our permanent candidate when that comes to pass. So my, and, you know, it's going to be a matter of interpretation, too, which is why I think we're spread out all over the place, too. But, you know, the long-term, you know, you know, creating goals and looking in the future. I think for the interim, what we want is to take the district goals and keep those going, not necessarily looking long-term. those, you know, going, not necessarily looking long-term. So I don't know if it's necessary to capture all of that this time around.
Could I, I, I want to just add a thought, because I, I, the wordsmithing, I think, the first thing you've got to ask yourself, though, and we do too, is we went out and asked a lot of people which ones they liked, and if they, if you do too much wordsmithing, somebody could look and say, that, that wasn't what I said was my number one. So, so there's a, there's a caution to that.
Yeah.
The, the second piece that, that I want, you'd like to find somebody that could do all twenty-eight of these things, okay? That's who you want, and you'll meet in, meet in, meet them someplace. But it doesn't allow you to be able to differentiate who's in the top echelon of candidates, because if they're all can do this, you haven't, you haven't done any differentiation. And that's why we, we think from, from the work we've done over the years, eight to ten of these, well, all of them are important. And you could double compound many of those, but it, it leads you in to say, well, anybody around the table would meet that category. So we are trying to put, put a descriptor in there that you, that sets one apart from another, so just let you think about that.
I'm going to add, as you, as you know, you're going to get at some of these other areas by asking a question. Question two will reflect some of the attributes that are reflected, that are, you know, called out in some of the other questions as well, just through their answers, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and you'll see, once you start seeing the, the information, like Rob and I have been doing preliminary interviews with, with some of the completed applications, we've got a set of questions that we ask them based on what you told us in, in our interviews with you. Okay, so we're, I will display those questions right now, but, but, so we're asking, in, in the video interview, there's another set of questions that are different than the pre, let me say, so you've got a whole set plus the set of questions you have. So you're going to have three different ingredients, this happening to be one that if you, if you at least had some benchmarks, that you say, yeah, we can live with these eight or these ten, or if you want to combine a couple of them, but I, I don't, I would really advise you not to do a lot of wholesale gerrymandering on them to get them all to fit in. Here's where you get all twenty-seven of them in there, you know, in eight. I know you're not doing that, but just wanted you to think that way.
Director Cast?
So, which is really helpful, because it's true, right? If everyone is exemplary, no one is exemplary, right? How does that go? So if we can do, since we can do ten, so I would just wanted to ask the board what they think. So one way of getting to ten, and I don't say this has to be done, but this is just kind of where my brain goes, is what's listed here in lines two through nine. There's a lot of board agreement with, right? So that could be definitely the top eight. But then I looked at underneath nine, there were three on this page that were at sixty percent for board, for, for board importance, which was line thirteen, nineteen, and twenty-two, which we all talked about. So line thirteen, you know, is part of that communications. Nineteen and twenty-two were both that strategic thinking. So out of those three, would we want to find our nine and ten, our number nine and ten for the list?
That's a good point.
And that way, since there was such alignment with the survey responses at the first eight, and then we would just round up, round out the last two.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a good compromise.
Yeah.
Do you have a suggestion on how you would combine those three into two?
No, but it occurs to me, no, I think we have to just choose. Like, it, it occurs to me, thirteen is, it's its own independent thought, again, kind of around that community engagement and communication piece. But nineteen and twenty-two, to me, are both strategic in nature, so maybe we'd have to choose between those two. I, I don't know if having both of them would add value, so, but which one?
I, I might suggest, if, you know, there's nothing magic about ten, there's not anything magic about eleven. But if you wanted to go to, go to that, and that does incorporate those that were the majority of the board, said that was an important factor, you could list them just as they are independently and not worry about having to wordsmith and add in that could be misinterpreted if anybody read it close, like some, just as all.
Sure.
As long as you're giving us permission.
See, I told you, we'd get you to twelve.
Director Hayes, we're now thinking about eleven indicators, so.
We do go to eleven.
We do, for sure.
Okay.
Must be insight on that one, okay.
Spinal tap reference.
Yeah, that makes it.
So what I had proposed was lines two through nine, to make up our one through eight, right, since there was such alignment with the survey and our responses. And then lines thirteen, nineteen, and twenty-two were strong indicators from the board. And then I thought we were going to be able to, before, we're going to have to be forced to choose only ten, but apparently we get to go to eleven.
Okay, all right.
Another thought, too, is maybe combine two to be number ten, and then just have it at a nice round number ten. And I was thinking about nineteen and twenty-two, maybe could be combined, something like ask great questions to think and act strategically while anticipating future needs, and just kind of make those two, kind of like you were saying, and like a group of like, you know, thinking to act strategically and just put something in there with a thought to the future, and like combine the two, if ten's better than eleven.
Yeah, you know, it depends what would be most helpful.
That, that, yeah, either way you want to go. We're, we're, we're serving you. You tell us, we, we gave you the data, and now you tell us what you want to do.
Director Hayes, you're smiling.
Well, I'm, I think I'm leaning towards keeping at eleven, one, to see if any, if they get the spinal tap reference, then that's a point.
It's a little gold star.
A little gold star, no. I'm, I'm trying to think. I think those are different enough in terms of candidates, and it might be worth keeping those two separate.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm good with that.
So we're thinking that we're going to take the eight, the eight that there's strong community agreement without wordsmithing, and the remaining three, there was strong board agreement without wordsmithing, and have eleven indicators.
Yeah.
That's what it sounds like.
I think so.
And let me just be clear, so as I put that together, then, is that, that the, the additional ones are the sixty percent, the third, number thirteen, nineteen, and twenty-two, those will be the add-ons to the top eight. And I realize the counting is off, because I'm not smart enough on my computer, that when I put a header in, it throws my, me off, I'm a little bit, so.
It's all good.
I think that's it. I think we're there.
So that's an affirmation, then, that we can proceed?
Yep.
Let's go for it.
Okay, okay, we'll, we'll do that this afternoon.
All right, that'll be great.
Just want to make a quick, just a comment, and I'm sure you all noticed it, but just those top, you know, top eight, top ten are really forward-facing attributes that I think Dr. Reed has given the community a picture of. You've pushed in expectation, exactly. They're, they're, they're attributes that are, that have to be proven out front, they're not buried in the curriculum and kind of behind the scenes. It's all by, you know, effective communicator, trusted leader, shows transparency, leads by example. They're all things that people, I think, expect the next person to continue, whatever it is, started, and have those transparency and visualness. I don't know if we'll find someone with the energy that you have and the working hours that you put in, but, but no, they're great, they're great attributes, and people just want to see it, I think, in the next person.
And I, and I think you will, I, as, as we have been kind of going through all of the, the applications, and, you know, we've called a lot of people, a lot of people have called us, and so there's a lot of give and take, but the ones that, they, they know, they've done their homework, they've, they've looked at, at your website, they, they, they know, the, I think we've right now got only two applicants that are from out of state.
Interesting.
And they won't know, but the detail, but in our conversations that we've had with, with the ones that we've interviewed, and I don't, you can speak for yourself on this room, they know what the standard is in North Shore as, as a result of Dr. Reed's leadership. So they're, they're aware of that, they know the bar is high, and that excites the ones we've, we've talked to so far, they're, they like that challenge. And so I, I think you will find that once we, we get those to you, and, and, there's two days left for applications to come through, so midnight on the nineteenth, so we'll see how that, that all goes. But I think, I, I appreciate your comment, but I, I do think you, you'll never replace the person that's leaving, but there will be attributes that the, the, the next person will have, and we'll, we'll do the best to bring those to you.
Thanks, Director Swain. Well, I wondered if you brought that up, just because I think there might be in some of the other attributes, things you're looking for, but that are not as obviously seen, is that kind of?
Yeah, I just was looking at the public's, you know, the public's response, because, you know, they don't work in the building, and, you know.
Right.
But, I mean, both are important, but it was just interesting to see what the public expects.
Yeah.
And their perspective is a little different than yours, right? Because you have different responsibilities.
And that's very natural. I mean, because you're, you're in a, you're, you're in a situation of knowing, just like me, knowing a little bit about what your profession is and what you do. I can have opinions, but I, I don't know the internal workings, and I think the same thing, when you come on as a board, you, you develop a, a lot of information that the constituencies really don't, don't have, and don't, a lot of them don't want to have, because that's why they elected you. So I, I think it's all kind of natural, but, and I think you've done that in your, in your interview questions. I know you got your first set of questions ready to go, but you could look at some of these other areas that, that aren't in that priority, and you might ask a question about them, and maybe that's another question that you have. Or your assignment-wise, you're going to have to start looking at your second round of interview questions if you've not started that yet, because the turnaround is real quick between interviews.
Right.
So just to kind of give you a heads up on that, so.
Be fun.
So, Dr. Reed, are you comfortable that we've got the first eight, and then thirteen, nineteen, and twenty-two we'll put in as the profile?
That's correct. Those would be the eleven attributes, and we're going to find a perfect match.
Yeah.
And the, the next meeting, I believe, is scheduled for Monday, the twenty-third.
Could I, I, right, you've, I know you all have, as I happen to have mine in front, this is the, the meeting dates, so could, could we confirm those?
Yes, absolutely, yes, please.
We could, I think we have, and I think the board has all received calendar invites for all the dates.
So is the twenty-seventh resolved?
No. The twenty-seventh has not been resolved, because that's, Director Swain's not able to be here on the twenty-seventh, so I didn't know if.
It's like really early in the morning, like eight o'clock, maybe, maybe we could do it.
But we don't have to decide that at this meeting, I guess, but.
That's the only thing unresolved, everything else is set.
So I just want to make sure that we, we know those, and, and the first set will be virtual.
Yes, the first set of interviews.
If that's what can help your, you be able to be here Friday morning, we can look at our calendars.
I can totally do it Friday morning.
I can make it happen.
Yeah, me too.
Just have Noah's wedding on Saturday, rehearsal dinner, but it's, it's all up north, and we're, with the food, so.
Oh, it's actually about Saturday.
Oh, I thought it was further in the day, I thought this was like a planning day, but this is like the wedding weekend?
Yeah.
First of dinner, the wedding.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so I could do it eight, I don't think we'll leave the house before eight, I don't think.
We could do it seven in the morning, one in the eight in the morning, whoever, the interim needs to be up and moving by seven.
Whatever interim that is, that's a, hey, fine, that's my perfect time.
If I get first, eight o'clock, I mean, that'd be fun. It'll be, it'll be a potential finalist.
It's a potential finalist second round.
Second round.
And then potential of us going to the diocese to take, uh, on that.
I would say you probably have it, if you start at seven thirty, you could do an hour, maybe a seven thirty and an eight thirty, and then maybe be done by ten, nine thirty, although you have to deliver it, that's a pretty, you'll have to kind of have a gut feeling, so that might be ambitious, because if you took more time, you might go to like eleven, if you took an hour to have.
I would just schedule it, because, I mean, yeah, yeah, we're not flying, we're just driving up north, so.
And we'll know Wednesday afternoon if it's going to be.
Yeah, how many finalists?
Long ones.
So I'll change the time of the meeting notification to seven thirty.
Okay. Wait, are we doing seven thirty or eight?
Seven thirty, I think the earlier you guys could get started, the better for bomb.
Okay.
I'll bring coffee in.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I'll take care of the coffee and muffins. If we started at seven thirty Friday morning, then.
Okay.
And that's in person?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, that, yeah.
That, that, that's a finalist, right? You gotta do in person.
Okay, so let's just clarify, because the in-person virtual has, I think, two different meanings here.
Right.
We are all in person, no matter what's going on, when you're talking virtual or in person.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay, that's a good.
Yeah, we'll be in person.
So you're all, even with the, with, when you do the, the first round, you're all going to be together.
In one room.
Oh, that helps us, because when we come in to meet with you, to help you process after those, that works well.
Yep, absolutely.
But as a follow-up to Director Hayes, but the applicants, hopefully we can do, they can do virtual participation.
The first round, yeah.
Yeah, but this, the second round.
Although if they're local, wouldn't we want them, wouldn't you want to meet them in person?
That's right. No, we picked our last one off of a.
Well, you, you, you decided, you decided to do the interview off of the little videos, right? And after that, you did an in-person, and then another kind of in-person, or didn't we? I don't know.
I think we did.
If there's, so whether it be internal or external candidates, is there a preferred method of whether it's in-person or virtual interviews?
Yeah.
And I, I was, was led to the, maybe wrongly, I, I thought we all had agreed that, that because of the confidentiality, that the first would be a Zoom interview.
Right.
And so they could do it, and then I've kind of assumed you were there, but if you're all here, that's fine, that's not, that part's not a problem. But then the following one, if you get down to two finalists or three finalists, then you would like to bring them in person, because by then, everybody.
And I think that's what we did last time.
Yeah.
And there's also the factor of if, if somebody is out of state and they can only participate virtually, and everybody else is in person, is that a disadvantage? That's something to consider.
Yeah.
Well, if, if the first round Zoom, you might as well be at home on Zoom. I mean, because I'm going to have to put you in five different rooms, or you're going to have to listen to it differently, I guess. Well, I guess we could, we could use this room, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, we go up to two oh one.
Yeah.
Can we do two, can we do it in two oh one? Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah, that's how we did it six years ago, was we were up in two oh one, and we watched the.
We could do it in two oh one. Well, but remember, that wasn't interactive.
It wasn't, so the semifinalist interviews were in person at that point. But if, if we can do a Zoom conference call in two oh one for the first round.
I think you could. You wouldn't need to, is my point, because you're each asking your own questions, so I'll just have to try to figure out what the tech setup is for that, if you're going to do a Zoom with all of you, but.
I think it's better if we're together. If we can.
Okay, all right. You bet.
Just lessons of the technical difficulties, depending where you're at.
Well, I can't, because it's confidential, we can't have you. But anyhow, all right, I'll figure it out. I will work on that, because I can't have people running in and out if there are.
Well, exactly, that's what I was thinking.
So that's my point.
That's, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out how to make sure I engineer success for you, but I will do my best.
And if we can all bring our laptops, and so we can all maybe even dial in in the same room.
That's another option now.
With, if we had.
If all of you had your own headphones or earbuds.
Yeah, if we all got earbuds, we could do that.
That's better or worse.
Then we could talk in person, in between interviews.
I think it's a backup. That's a good backup to do that. And I'll see if I can get something set up that's not, in case it didn't work. We have a week to figure it out, so.
Okay.
Let me handle that level of detail, I'll just plan on two oh one for the time of that meeting, and I'll adjust the time of the meeting for Friday, the twenty-seventh.
This is a question for you, and how you would like us to handle that, is once the board goes through the twenty, the meeting on the twenty-fourth, or twenty, twenty-third, and identify who. uh, or 20, 23rd, and identify who they want, wanna interview, uh, that's a quick turnaround for the next day, uh, to get people to-
Well, it's less worrisome because it's gonna be Zoom, so it's just about scheduling them.
Who, who on your team do you want us?
It'll have to be Siobhan and I, so just send it to, I guess, both Siobhan and I, um, only, and no one else on the team.
Okay, okay, so we'll, once we go through that meeting day, then I'll get you the contact information and name, and then you can schedule how many, how many.
And then I'll put Siobhan on it, and she'll just take it from there.
Okay, and we'll have to have, have her kinda stand ready for the next one, which turns around even faster on the finalists, depending on what you all do.
She's a pretty quick draw.
Yeah, yeah.
She is, she is.
But we can, I can, you know, we can do that offline.
If it, so here's just a question, on Monday, when you select the number, if I need to lengthen the meeting time, we've scheduled for executive session on Tuesday, you need to tell me, someone needs to, like, I don't know how long the interviews, and like, if you add one, we have to make sure the exec session timing is right. Because you're gonna start a meeting here, just know that, you're, the special meeting you start on the diocese and you recess to go to the executive session, then you'll come back down, and we're not taking any action on Monday. There's a possibility you could on Tuesday, but you don't need to, and then there's a possibility you could on Friday.
Exactly.
So that's how it's framed, you start here and then you'll go upstairs.
Possible action on Wednesday.
Okay.
Wednesday, if you're still interviewing, that was day two, possibly.
Okay. Yeah, so we have time for about six interviews altogether, six people in.
Are you still going, you're still planning on 90 minutes on each?
Or, or with some time in between.
You got 75, practice has been a 75-minute interview, 15, 15 minutes in between allows you to go to the restroom, do a little bit of debriefing, and then go back in.
I think an hour, I think we kept it at 50 to 40.
I think, I think the general, to give enough time for everything, plan on a one-hour interview, and then somebody's gonna run over, you know, so we have a 15-minute flex and then 15 minutes to reflect and take a break.
See, I'm, I'm planning, what is general paranoia around tech issues? That's what I'm planning for, a little buffer for tech issues, yeah. Okay.
But you, I hate to belabor, but as soon as you decide what, so when we call the candidates, um, we need to say, look, you, you've got a plan for 15 minutes, 60 minutes, 75-minute interviews.
Yep.
And, and just so they know that, so.
Okay.
I was just going off of what came from Dr. Reed's office on the schedule that says 90 minutes, and I just, I'm fine with that, I just, I don't-
I don't, 90 minutes, we'll only 90 minutes.
60 minutes for the interview.
30 minutes, we discussed.
That's what you guys, I thought, so I don't-
Well, you got a 15 buff, 15-minute buffer on either side, giving you the, okay, okay.
60-minute interview.
I think it's 60, and you just stick to the 60, and-
Yeah, I think so. And then we have time to chat in between.
Then you'll have a, you'll have the feel, if somebody can't do it within 60, that's a different issue.
That's good news for the candidates. 60 is a lot of minutes.
Go through all the questions in 60 minutes, just.
And we will, at the, at the meeting on the 23rd, uh, we will present the materials, and then we'll give you some do's and don'ts, suggestions on, which you already know, but it's on, uh, the candidates, and, uh, we'll have information for you on how to proceed with opening and closing and those kinds of things, so.
I, just, um, to be really, really clear, I'll be with you to start the meeting, and I'll be with you to end the meeting, but I will not be joining you in executive session, you're on your own.
Right, got it.
So, I know, um, but I will be your start and finish and not, so, okay.
Could I, I'll add one piece on that, we typically do not sit into the, the interviews, uh, but we will be there at the end. If you want us to do that, we, we can sit in on the interviews if you like, but most places, the board wants to do that by themselves, but, because we're not, we wanna make sure we're not part of the, the selecting process, we're getting the, so, but, but, um, we'll just need to know that, because on, on the last day of, of the first round, we will come in and help facilitate that discussion, have a matrix if you have some difficulties coming to closure on, on that, so we'll just have to know that piece.
Yeah, I think we built in about an hour for that at the end of the session on Wednesday.
Say that again, please.
I think we built in about an hour, uh, for that at the end of the Wednesday session for you.
I, that would be ideal, if we can do that in an hour, yeah, yeah. The biggest thing you have on that, as, as you well know, is that you're gonna, you're gonna start in a public session, and then you go to, to an executive session. You kinda tend to need to, the, the next public session will be scheduled at X time or a close approximation. You can always extend it, uh, uh, but there may be people waiting to, to watch or be here for that, so.
By law, we have to say when we're, we'll be done, yeah.
All right, well, I think, President McGorney, I think we've covered everything, if you're contemplating adjournment.
I think I am. Are we all in agreement, we are done for the, the day, okay?
Yeah, thank you for your help.
Yes, thank you to Jim and Rob from GR Recruiting, and just for the record, for our audience to, are we no longer recording?
We still are.
Okay. For the audience, I wanna just say a, a great thanks to the community for the responses that we received from the survey. It was a terrific response from the community and input well appreciated. So thank you all.